We go ahead and get started.
It's now 10 a.m. and you do have a quorum, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Hey, thank you. And I'll call the this meeting of the Housing Committee of the City Council to order. The call of the meeting is as follows. The Housing Committee will conduct a public hearing to discuss inclusionary zoning preference eligibility and how the new state-level housing choice law at meetings of the city's public bodies in response to the threat posed to the public by the COVID-19 virus and issued guidelines for the city's use of remote participation. In addition to having members of the council participate remotely, we have also set up Zoom teleconference for public comment. Please be aware that Zoom is only being used for public comment. In order to watch the meeting, please tune into Channel 22 or visit the open meeting portal on the city's website. So I was going to make a couple of brief opening remarks, then turn it over to my co-chair, Councilor Simmons, and see if there's anything she would like to add, and then we'll pass it to city staff for their presentations and then to public comment. And so the committee meeting today, we're discussing two different topics. The one is
Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, excuse me.
Sure.
We need to take a roll call for quorum.
Thank you. Thank you for landing me.
Councilor Sabrina Wheeler?
Present and audible.
Present. Councilor Simmons?
Present and audible.
Present and audible. Vice Mayor Mallon?
Present and audible.
Present and audible. Councilman McGovern?
Present and audible.
Present and audible. Councilor Zandervan? Councilor Zandervan? Absent. A quorum is present with four in attendance.
Thank you. And so the meeting today, we have two different topics. The one is an update to the city's inclusionary preferences and eligibility, which the council and city staff have been working on for a couple of years. The new preferences have gone into effect. So unlike the previous Housing Committee meeting where the staff was seeking feedback from the council and looking to update them, they're now in effect. It's a presentation on how they're into effect so that we, as the council, understand it and to talk about how they're publicizing the new preferences. And then the other part of the meeting is a discussion of the state's recently updated, recent new law, I should say, the Housing Choices Law, which affects zoning in Cambridge and cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And one provision, for instance, lowers the threshold that's needed for some zoning changes from a supermajority to a simple majority. And so this is to help us understand on the council what require, what types of zoning changes will require six votes and will require five votes and other provisions of the law that would be helpful to understand. And so with that, I'll turn it over to my co-chair, Councilor Simmons.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge my co-chair, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, for scheduling this meeting and to everyone who has had a hand in revisiting and reviewing our inclusionary eligibility criteria and preferences over the past year and also taking up the important topic of the new state-level housing choice law and how it's going to affect zoning in Cambridge. When we look at our inclusionary eligibility, one of the, to one of the many recommendations to come out of the comprehensive housing plan that I presented to the council back in 2017 during the opening term as mayor, that plan was largely the brainchild of affordable housing advocate and walking encyclopedia or housingpedia Cheryl Ann Pizzaziole. Cheryl Ann had an exhaustive knowledge of the city's many housing programs, policy strengths, and its weaknesses. She was an ardent advocate for affordability. And I think it should be noted in this work, particularly the conversation, preferences is taken up in such a way that it honors the work that she and many housing advocates labored on and over for so many years. Cheryl Ann and I, along with a small group of what I call the Kitchen Table Advisors, recognized that our inclusionary program, which had done so much to help so many, remained in the city since, you know, came to the city since the loss of rent control in the mid-'90s and has and needed some fine tuning to ensure it served precisely the population that it was originally intended to serve. Our hope has long been that this program's preferences could be revisited and possibly reweighed to give greater opportunity for those who have been pushed out in this place from the city in the not-too-distant past, a chance to return to Cambridge. And I know all of us in this hearing appreciate the work the CDD has been doing, the Oxford to serve, the city solicitor, and the Affordable Housing Trust and others who have been working to see how this idea can be actualized. And again, it's just important to note that this conversation on preferences in particular goes back to when Brian Murphy was the city manager for the community development. So I know we have a lot of material to get through, so I will close my opening remarks by again thanking everyone for being here this morning. I do, Mr. Chair, I want to take the, take the, the privilege of just acknowledging that our mayor is here, Mayor Siddiqui. And I just also want to say that I look forward to discuss not only the housing preferences, with what I'm hoping is we'll have some materials that we can start to move on, move forward, that this is something that we can actually get, I would say, adopted or may have the amendments adopted in this council term. And then also have the very important conversation about the housing choice program and how this is going to impact housing across the city. I look forward to this discussion that's about to get underway. I thank you and I yield the floor.
Thank you, Councilor Simmons. I also want to acknowledge that Councilor Toomey is with us for the meeting today. And so with that, we'll turn it over to city staff for their presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Co-Chair Sabrina Wheeler and Co-Chair Simmons for the opportunity. We are going to start with the update on the inclusionary zoning preferences. Before I go there, I just wanted to note that city staff who are here, our Director of Housing at Curie Development, Chris Cotter, who has really been key drive, a person working with the council and driving the changes towards to the inclusionary zoning preferences, along with his, his team on the inclusionary zoning staff. We also have a city solicitor, Nancy Glowa. And I see that we've been joined also by the city manager's housing liaison, Maura Pensac, who is a crucial partner in working with, particularly with tenants and folks in affordable housing throughout the city. So I just wanted to say that in terms of the status of the inclusionary zoning preferences, as the co-chairs noted, we have been working on this for, for now, over, actually, I would say several years now with the council's Housing Committee and also with the Affordable Housing Trust to, to frame what the preferences, what the changes to the preferences ought to be. That material was finalized earlier in the year and was posted for public comment in May. I'm sorry, in April, and comments were due in May. These are, the, the preference materials are not actually part of the ordinance. They fall under standards and procedures, so they can be administratively adopted. But we did want to make sure, given that they are significant, there's been a lot of interest in them, to have them be posted publicly and get comment. We have received several comments, which currently we are processing between, you know, us at CDD and, and the Law Department to figure out which of those changes can be incorporated, which fit into preferences and which might be dealt with through other, other avenues. So I'm going to turn it over to our Housing Director, Chris Cotter, to speak to that and provide an update. Chris?
Thanks, Aram, and through you, Mr. Co-Chair, Madam Co-Chair, members of the committee. So as Aram noted, we've been working on this for a while. I can think back. I appreciate the mention of Cheryl Ann, Councilor Simmons. I know early on Cheryl Ann was a key part of several discussions we had and thinking about how we might adapt the preferences to better serve the community. And as you know, Cheryl Ann was a member of the Affordable Housing Trust and was a key part of that discussion and helping us understand that this is, in some ways, an unwinnable argument. We're ordering the line in terms of how we're considering applicants and whatever change we make will push some folks ahead and have a negative impact on others. So that said, though, we have been moving forward with the changes that we had discussed with you at the, one of the last meetings, I think, as Aram noted. Over the last several months, we have put those recommended policy changes into what we've called standards and procedures regarding selection of applicants for inclusionary housing. These are the, the written standards that we will use to screen applicants for our program, to administer preferences. They will describe what we mean when we say preference for Cambridge residents, preference for emergency housing need. They will provide examples of documentation that we would be looking at to establish that eligibility for those, those preferences. We've also included in the standards changes in documentation requirements for Cambridge residency. This is another thing, not a preference-related issue, but I know we've had concerns and challenges with applicants who've had trouble establishing that they are a resident. Maybe they don't have a lease, maybe they don't have a utility bill. So what we've included in our standards is more flexibility and a greater choice of documents that could be provided to establish someone's residency. So what I can do is briefly walk through where we are. We're almost done. We're moving forward with the, the changes. So as Aram noted, we put these standards out in April for public comment. We asked, I think we tried to push them out every way we could to ensure that people saw what we were proposing and we could get comments back. We did notify every resident applicant in our program of these changes to make sure that folks saw them and had a chance to comment on them before they were implemented. We have received comments. We have a deadline for comments last month, so we have received comments and have been looking at them. We've got a range of comments that we have been discussing internally. And I guess just before I do that, though, I get to the comments with just to back up briefly and give a quick recap of the major changes. The, what we're doing here, I guess, at a high level, a couple of things. Number one, to recalibrate the preferences so that applicants with an emergency housing need are considered before applicants without an emergency housing need. And so what that does is it really is resetting our, the hierarchy of preferences, which had, to this point, given more of an advantage to households with children over households with an emergency need. So we're going to promote that emergency housing preference to be the most impactful preference after the, the preference for Cambridge residents. So that's, I think, one of the major changes that we're, we're advancing here. We're also expanding opportunities for households with children under 18 by eliminating the additional preference for households with children under six for rental units. One of the things that we've seen, as we've discussed, is that households with children that are between six and 18 are very challenged to get through our system under the current preferences. And we're able to serve households under six pretty quickly. So to eliminate that and give more opportunity to households with children under 18, but over the age of six, was another major goal. We've also expanded and somewhat modified our criteria for an emergency housing need. And again, that would become a very, a more significant preference. We've included in that an explicit preference for victims of domestic violence to, to be clear that that's an emergency and have made some other changes to, to the criteria and the categories for emergency housing need. We've, as I noted, expanded the documentation for someone to qualify as a resident. We've also expanded the definition of, of the preference for, the definition of preference for Cambridge residency to include recently displaced households to, as Co-Chair Simmons noted, give some opportunity for folks who have been recently displaced to come in and get that advantage as an applicant. Another key change in that regard is we are being explicit in saying that if an applicant applies and is determined to be a Cambridge resident or gets that preference, that they, they maintain that preference for so long as that, that application is active. So if someone applies and then moves out of Cambridge for any reason and they have continued to have that active application, the fact that we've determined them eligible for that preference, initially they'll, they'll continue to have that designation for so long as that application's active. So another way in which we hope to try to provide more flexibility for folks that are struggling to stay in Cambridge and try to help people that, for a variety of reasons, might have to move out of the city. So that is the, I think, the high level. We would happy to answer any questions on that. And then we have received comments on the, the changes that which we have been looking at. We're looking at them with a number of other departments that are involved with this and having some discussions about that. We think that we will, I think we have got some questions for some of the commenters, so we'll be in touch with some of them to clarify some of the comments that have come in. And then just briefly to go through some of the comments that we have received. We got comments from a number of organizations and a number of individuals. We had comments on the, the way in which we are structuring the preference for victims of domestic violence. We had included in their criteria for affidavits and affirmations to attest to someone being a victim of domestic violence. We have a comment suggesting that we should look at a self-certification for victims of domestic violence to make it easier for a victim to, to come in and say that they are impacted and can self-certify to that. Likewise, we had suggested a six-month period in which to, someone could apply to get that status for that emergency. We have a comment to provide more flexibility in a longer period of time for that. So those are a couple of things that we're looking at. We have clarified in our emergency criteria for households facing eviction. We've established that the criteria to be at the time that the court filing has been submitted for no, with no alleged fault in our judgment that has been issued. We have a comment suggesting that we should not look at fault for pending eviction cases where determinations have not yet been made by a court. We had a comment to ask us to preserve the emergency status of applicants in our current pool to the extent that they still have emergency situations that would no longer qualify as emergencies under our revised criteria. So for example, under our current system, we will consider an emergency housing need to someone who is overcrowded. That's not something that we have included in the revised standards. So the request would, in this case, then suggest that we continue to consider an applicant who is overcrowded so long as they have an active application and we get to them at some point under the new system. So that's something that we're looking at. We, in the standards here, in response to the discussion with the council, have included a preference, a new preference for, for households that are, contain a member who's a veteran. So that's in there and I should, I should have said that that's one of the other major changes that we've done. We had a question about whether or not having that preference might have a disparate impact on protected classes under fair housing laws, given the, I guess, the racial makeup of veterans in the state. So that's something that we're, we're looking at to see. We certainly don't want to have any concern in that regard where we were creating some fair housing issue with what we're doing. And then generally, we got some other comments more on the detail. We got comments on our preference for Cambridge-based workers, suggesting that we should be considering Cambridge-based workers at the same level with Cambridge residents to give them the same status under our revised standards. It would continue to be what we do now, which is to look at Cambridge-based workers' preference just behind residents. So we wouldn't get to Cambridge-based workers until we were, had considered all residents. So we had a comment to reconsider that. We had requests to provide more flexible options for former residents. As I noted, we have got some in there and we had comments suggesting that, I guess that's a good thing and that we should look at that. We had comments suggesting that we should loosen documentation for preliminary We had comments suggesting that we should loosen documentation for preliminary applications, particularly for those for households who might, I guess, might be unlikely to be served, particularly non residents for larger units. So that's something that we are looking at. And we had a number of comments on the emergency housing need and suggesting that we look at either, I guess, providing more flexibility or looking at lease end dates as a potential emergency criteria so that we would be better able to help applicants time their lease end date with with their being offered housing through the inclusionary program. So as noted, we're looking at all these comments, we're talking with all the other relevant departments to get their feedback and looking forward for next steps, as I noted, we expect to be following up with some of the commenters to to ask some clarifying questions and to have a bit of a discussion to make sure that we understand what the comments are. Once we do that, we would then intend to issue final standards for tenant screening or tenant selection for inclusionary, at which point we would then begin to implement them. So at this point, we are also beginning to prepare revised material that we'd use for applications for outreach material to have that ready as we try to zero in on what the final changes will be. So we have those ready to go. We are preparing to send a mailing to every applicant in both our rental and our homeownership programs, about four thousand applicants announcing the changes and the fact that, you know, announcing when they'll become effective and advising them of what the changes might mean, giving them information about any questions that they might have and asking them to update their application if any of the changes might be relevant to their application. So we'll be looking for for those updates to the extent that they might help someone. And at that point, then we would also be resorting our pool based upon the changes. And I think the the big thing that we would expect with that, it's really predominantly in the rental pool would be to bring up all the emergency applicants to the the first tier, where they would getting additional preferences that we would then for the you know, that point forward, be looking through our backlog of applicants with emergencies to make sure that that we're we're serving them and dealing with those folks. And then, you know, as we bring those applicants current, then trying to see how we are able to make, keep current with new emergency applicants, the extent that they come in from that point forward. The other thing that will happen, I think, the big thing that will change is as we resort the pool with regard to preference for families with young kids, that will also re shift a number of the applicants, particularly in the three bedroom pool. We'll move up a lot of applicants who are have been in the queue for a long time, who are still pretty deep in the in the queue, given the the lack of three bedrooms that we see. And we'll advantage them and at the same time, we will reorder some of the more recent applicants with younger kids who will no longer have that preference. So that's, I I think, the the quick update, happy to answer any questions, we are excited to move forward with it, we're into the detail and thinking through logistics as as to how we will be rolling this out.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No fault evictions, but what I wasn't clear on was, is that a new, is that a part of the criteria? Or was that part of some of the questions that you got and you're considering?
It's it's a little bit of both. So what we have always considered is evictions that have been issued for no fault of the of the resident. And so what we're that then when the court action is filed filed for for no faults.
Send people to issue, and these are people that have never been in a shelter. So does not permanently house, does that take that into account? Is that an expansion of that definition of who's considered homeless or unhoused? And how, and if not, is that something that we can do? And again, I know these things are hard to prove, but you know, we do have a lot of folks that, you know, are are staying with someone because, you know, they have a friend and they want to take advantage of that or a family member, but you know, technically, they're they don't have a, they're they're unhoused.
Yes, that through you, Mr. Coach here, a good question. And yes, we are trying to expand the criteria that we would look at to 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 be eligible for that that homeless preference. So in the past, we've looked at letters from shelters or transitional facilities. So what we've done with the criteria that we look at now is to expand it to include statements from housing search workers or other professionals that are working with an applicant who's unhoused, looking for housing.
Okay, great. In the in the list, and I agree with Councilor Simmons, by the way, I'm glad to see the no fault eviction, and I know there's been a lot of conversation over the years about you know, do we have to wait until someone gets something from the court? You know, gets a letter from the court or a judgment from the court and is there some way to, you know, does a letter of eviction or you know, from the landlord, you know, could that qualify to get that process started sooner? So that's something just, I'm sure you've given it a lot of thought, but, you know, to put into the mix. But in the list of require, requi- documentation for for residency, you guys know this is something I talk about a lot because we have a lot of folks who have difficulty getting so those things. I didn't see in that list an affidavit from the landlord. You know, there's, there's a lot of folks who, you know, if you're renting a room in someone's house, the utility bills aren't in your name necessarily, you know, or you don't have an actual lease. But could a notarized affidavit from a landlord, can it can that be added to the list?
We we have not looked at that, we certainly can, it's not something that we included in what we put out. We can look at that, I think what we wanted to do was to to try to create a list of documents that folks would have access to without having to necessarily go and cite to it to their landlord, they want an affidavit or something for applying for housing, but to rather look to see what someone might have. And I can think of, you know, as we looked at this, we thought about a number of the cases where we've seen folks that have been challenged with providing that documentation. So what we've done is create kind of three tiers of documentation and said you can mix and match there. So if you can't show us utility bill, can you show us a cellphone bill? Can you show us a tax return? Can you show us rent receipts? Can you show us a renter's insurance statement or an ID, a credit card statement? So really to give more options that we think people will be able to choose from. But we certainly can go back and look at this to see if if a statement from an owner would be something that we we should add to that.
Yeah, I, you know, I know we've always, and I think that's great that, you know, we've expanded that and I and I know you know, I know we've we've been pretty, you know, flexible and and tried to work that even with all that, I know that there are still people that can't get a lot of those things. And so, you know, just as many sort of options we can give people the better. And then lastly, I don't, I don't, I hope this isn't outside the scope of what you're, you know, what you're reporting, but we also, and I think we had some policy orders around this, I think the vice mayor may have put something in and and others around, you know, credit checks and, you know, folks who get, they go through our system, right? And then we turn them over to a management company and then they get blocked there for for some reason. And so what do we, you know, what what can we do around that? And maybe that's a solicitor question and what are we doing? I know we we try to talk to management companies, but again, there are some that are better than others. So what can we do around sort of credit checks and even minor query issues? You know, if I, that that can help people.
Again, a good question, and we are looking at that, I think that is outside of the scope of what we're we're doing here with the preferences. But we certainly have, we've seen the policy orders that have been looking at them and talking with the law department to prepare a response and to try to outline what we think we can do, what we we can't do and what the best approach is, given the concern.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I I would echo Councilor McGovern's request for having some kind of PowerPoint or the draft materials being included in today's warden or housing committee online portal. You know, it is easier to have everything in one place and it is easier to kind of think about these things when you can see them on the screen and and have the report prior to, so we can all be prepared for the meeting. I guess I have the same questions as Counselor Simmons, how do we make these actionable? What are the next steps? And I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments that were made around domestic violence, which, by the way, I think is incredibly important for us to be including in the emergency status because I can tell you that a lot of the families that I work with or have worked with to to place into inclusionary housing have had have been victims of a domestic abuse and it is heartbreaking to tell them that they don't have emergency status. So I'm curious about the self certification or attestation. I think it's a really salient point. I think many domestic violence victims are not willing to go to the police, are not willing to make that step and and take it to to public safety. I think so it is going to be critical for us to have some kind of self attestation or self certification for for those victims as well as a period, some sort of period of time if we aren't going to go the self certification route because this is a very, very vulnerable population. And we need to, if we are going to be granting them these emergency status, we just make need to make sure that they don't have to jump to through a million hoops to to get that emergency. So that's, that's one thing. I also wanted to, the expanded documentation for Cambridge residents for recently displaced. I'm just looking at the draft online. Is it twelve months in the recently displaced or is it, it seems to be either it's specifically written as twelve months, but then it's if you if you put in your inclusionary application, you get to keep your Cambridge status for as long as your application is in. So can you just explain the difference between those two things in the draft?
Sure. Yes, no, good, good question. The, so the two separate components that come together and the first one would be for someone who is recently displaced to file an application within twelve months of of that displacement, you know, under the criteria that that relate out there. And then for any applicant, including those who are recently displaced, if they are considered eligible for that preference for Cambridge residency, that they maintain that preference for as long as the application is active, no matter what happens. So, you know, if someone was recently displaced and applied and during the the time their application was active, they moved back to to Cambridge and they would be a resident, but then they had to move out again and no longer be a resident, they would throughout that entire time be considered for the residency preference as being a recently displaced or or a resident during the time of that app that that application is active.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through that. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through that, I think that clears it up. So if I'm, if I'm displaced, I moved to Medford, within 12 months of that displacement, I can put in an application for an inclusionary unit and I will be considered a Cambridge resident. Also, at the same time, if I put in my application for an inclusionary unit a year ago and I still wasn't called and I had to move out of Cambridge, I still can retain my residency status.
That's right. I guess just with the one qualification that with the moving to Medford, it is, it's a, a displacement. You know, it's not, um, it's someone who's been, uh, displaced as a result of a, of, uh, an eviction action.
Okay, understood. And it has to be a court-ordered eviction action. It isn't just somebody buys a, you know, buys a apartment building and tells everybody they have to be out within 12 months.
That's right.
Okay, I mean, I think we have had a, a number of conversations about how the most common displacement is the, somebody buys an apartment building and tells everybody they have to leave because they are re-renovating them and, um, re-renting them for a higher rate rather than a court-ordered eviction. So I, I know we've had a lot of conversations about how to include those folks as, um, emergency status. So that's still an outstanding item, I think, for me in terms of these, uh, these preferences. My question, I, go ahead, Chris.
So I'd say in response to that, what we would advise is that when those cases are being, worked out with, uh, after a sale, that, that people put applications in before they're displaced as residents. And then no matter what happens, that application is in the queue and they get that, that preference. And I think that that's what we would want to advise to, to anyone in that situation is to, to put an application in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So in terms of some of these, um, both the comments and the draft, how do we move these forward? You know, if we want to say today, as the housing committee, we agree, and I'm not, I'm not speaking for my colleagues certainly, that it would be, it would be acceptable to have self-certification or attestation for a domestic violence victim. As per the comments that were made, how do we transmit that to, uh, CDD so that they are in the final draft?
I, I think the discussion is really what we, all we need to hear. And, you know, as Aram said, these are not, um, these standards don't require any action by the committee or the council. These are administrative standards that are developed by the department. And so, uh, we've put out the draft, uh, and as we look at, assess and make changes based on the comments, our next step would be then to, put the, the standards out in their final form and then to begin to implement them. And so that, that's, you know, our plan is to do that, obviously taking into consideration comments that come from you all today. And as I noted, we've got some questions on the comments that we'll be addressing with some of the commenters. But then we then look to, uh, make the standards final and begin to, to implement them.
If I might add just one thing to, to the chair, uh, on that specific, um, point about self-certification for, um, domestic violence, um, we are, what we are looking at is, um, aligning with other, uh, with other programs at the federal and state level. And, um, they do, in fact, um, allow, I mean, that's sort of after receiving the comments, we are digging deeper into that. And I think that there is path for self-certification. So, um, I think that your, your concern on, on that particular point will be addressed in the, um, in the revisions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think we should also, um, I think another comment that came through was around preserving emergency status that already exists. For example, I think the, you said overcrowding was an example that came up. So this committee should probably talk about whether or not we, uh, want to preserve those emergency status folks, um, as we move forward. But my last question is, um, this was a, a long time in coming together and I'm curious what the timeline is. If you, um, you know, once we have these comments, you hear from us today, how quickly can these be implemented?
Another good question. And as I said, we're beginning to put together the material. And as we finalize what will be in the, 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 the final standards, we want to have that ready. And so our goal is to have, uh, material out and to be implementing this in July.
And when you say material, what does that encompass?
To have our application revised with the, the new standards and, and material, uh, to have our outreach material done, to have reached out to every applicant, to make sure that they understand the, the change and have a, an opportunity to give us an updated application, if that would be to their advantage under the new preferences. So there's a, a, a fair amount of work programmatically, uh, to, to put together this and to, to really, I guess, to say, launch it for lack, lack of a better word. So that work is now underway and I think it's, it's reasonable that we can have this ready to go, uh, next month and have it out and, and begin to have that be, this be the, the policy.
Okay, that, that's helpful. Thank you, um, Mr. Chair, yield back.
Great, thank you. And I do want to acknowledge the company's background as well. And I just wanted to, I think I spoke earlier when I said the inclusionary preferences are already in effect. The public comment period is closed, we're still following up on, on some of the public comments. And one of the questions I had was, is there a, a target date for implementation or is that not quite figured out yet?
Yeah, no, I, I think that, that our, our goal and our hope, and I believe it's, it's possible, is to have, uh, the process, with reviewing of the comments conclude, prepare material and to have this, uh, out in operational, uh, next month.
Great, yeah, I would, um, uh, look forward to hearing about how we're publicizing it to folks who have, have applied previously in, uh, in case they need to update their applications and getting the word out more broadly. But that makes a lot of sense. And also just wanted to say, I, I concur with the vice mayor about the, the self-certification for domestic violence. If we can, um, make sure that's, that's part of the rollout, that would be great. Are there any other questions from, uh, committee members or other counselors on this topic before we move to the, uh, other half of the, the committee meeting? Seeing none, um, we can move on then to the, uh, housing choices, uh, presentation, um, part of the committee meetings. I'll turn it back over to staff for that.
Chair, on that, we, oh, the city solicitor's office is here. I know we've just been joined also by Megan Bear in addition to, um, to Nancy Flora. I don't believe that we had, eh, among staff, any presentation on, on that, uh, matter. But law department staff, CDD staff, Mara, we are here and ready to respond to any discussion or questions that the committee might have.
Okay, I think the, the main purpose of, of that having as a topic was to, to explain, um, how the, the law works. And in particular, you know, what types of zoning changes it applies to, what, um, takes of changes. No longer need a, a super majority and only need a, a simple majority. Um, I had come up, um, right at the end of the discussion around, uh, this, uh, Cabot, Cabot Forbes petition. And if the law department or, or other staff could, could talk more about that, um, and any other provisions that were relevant, that would be helpful. And then maybe we can, uh, take some questions from counselors.
Mr. Chair, uh, we, we had not understood that we were, um, being requested to make a presentation. I'm happy to, um, go through some of the provisions. It is actually fairly complex, so I'm not sure that I can say that we can cover all the points, but I'm happy to go through some of the main points and then see if council has questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. So, um, the, uh, the, the, the change, the main changes of this law are among the following. To reduce the threshold of votes needed to adopt certain zoning measures that promote housing production from two-thirds to a simple majority. And I'll go through in a moment what types of things those would be. The goal is to make it easier for local governments to approve housing supportive zoning and development. And the new law also outlines a series of housing best practices that can be enacted by a simple majority vote, such as reducing residential dimensional requirements, adopting 40R smart growth or starter home zoning, allowing accessory dwelling units or in-law units by right. In addition, the law, um, has some provisions that allow municipalities to enter into revenue sharing agreements for sites affecting more than one local government by a simple majority vote. It provides that a court may require a plaintiff appealing a decision to approve a special permit variance or site plan to post a surety or cash bond in an amount up to $50,000 to secure the payment of costs if the court finds that the harm to the defendant or to the public, public interest resulting from such delays caused by the appeal outweighs the financial burden of the surety or cash bond on the plaintiffs. In addition, with respect to, uh, so-called MBTA communities or communities that are within a certain range of MBTA, of public transportation facilities, it provides that each MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or by law that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. The Department of Housing and Community Development at the state has issued some preliminary guidance on this. I think that there are still, um, efforts at the state to work through some of the details. And we also have not fully analyzed everything that would, um, need to take place. So with respect to, uh, amendments that would allow for a some majority vote, certain kinds of housing would be as of right. Multifamily, meaning three plus units and mixed-use developments in an eligible location, accessory dwelling units and open space in residential developments. So, um, it allows for open space residential development as of right. Again, with respect to the accessory dwelling unit that I had just mentioned, that can be either within the principal dwelling or within a detached structure on the same lot, um, both of which can be, would be allowed as of right. It allows by special, special permit, an accessory dwelling unit in a detached, sorry, um, detached structure on the same lot. That seems contradictory to me. So I'll have to look further into that. This is a note, this is guidance provided by DHCD. Reduces the parking requirement for residential or mixed-use development under a special permit. It permits an increase in the principal density of population or intensity of a particular use in a proposed multifamily or mixed-use development that requires a special permit. It changes dimensional standards such as lot coverage or floor area ratio, height setbacks, minimum open space coverage, parking, building coverage to allow for the construction of additional residential units on a particular parcel or parcels. Provides for the transfer of development rights or natural resource protection zoning in instances where the adoption of zoning promotes the concentration of development in the areas that the municipality deemed is most appropriate for such development, but that will not result in a diminution of the maximum number of housing units that could be developed within the community. And it, as I mentioned before, it allows for smart growth or starter home districts in accordance with, uh, chapter 40R, section three. The state, uh, noted in its guidance that the law has not specified who determines whether a proposed zoning ordinance is the kind that can be approved by a simple majority vote. And, um, their guidance thus far is to work with both the, uh, the legislative bodies such as yourselves or the community to try to, uh, determine what we think the threshold will be in various instances and then craft a zoning amendment to take that into account. It also, the DHCD has also said that with respect to some of these changes, that the things that this law says are allowed as of right are in fact allowed as of right, whether we amend our zoning ordinance or not. I think the better practice that they also acknowledged is to amend the zoning ordinance to conform to these new state law requirements. So there's no ambiguity or confusion for people. So this is something that we will be working with CDD on in the near future to try to, um, figure out the work plan and what needs to be done. With respect to the MBTA community issue, um, it, the new section 3A of the, of chapter 48 provides that each MBTA community, which we believe we are one, shall have a zoning ordinance that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, that that housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children and that each such district shall have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, subject to any further limitations imposed by section 40 of chapter 131 and title five of the environmental code and shall be located not more than half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal or bus station, if, if applicable. So we are looking into that presently. We have not, um, fully analyzed, um, the issues that need to be addressed in that. I don't think I have any other comments at this time with respect to the, uh, materials that we've gathered together, um, as again, I was not, uh, thinking that we were making a presentation, but, um, would be happy to answer questions and we will certainly be doing more work on this and getting back to the council. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might add one point, not, not the, not the lawyer's perspective, but the planner's perspective on the, um, the piece that relates to multifamily zoning, uh, for MBTA communities. And we certainly will do the due diligence to confirm this. But, um, in Cambridge, we have many of our districts are multifamily districts and that, um, that, that are definitely within, uh, a half a mile of transit. So, um, it don't feel like that is something that we are going to need to make changes to, um, to address. But obviously, certainly the, the legal review is appropriate to, to do to confirm that. And also keeping in, in mind that the council's desire through multiple discussions at, um, at various committees, this one as well as neighborhood long-term planning around not, um, wanting to have single and two-family districts, um, in, in anywhere in the city and really trying to transform to multifamily being permitted throughout would, um, if, if such changes are, are adopted, um, in, in any form that's being discussed, then, um, you know, either zoning that's before us or some, um, modified version. Though that would certainly address any potential concerns because our density is, is significantly higher than what Nancy even mentioned in terms of 15 dwelling units per, per acre as, as permitted by zoning as well.
Thank you. And before we go to questions from counselors, I think we, um, should get a public comment.
There are three public commenters this time. The first public commenter is Suzanne Blier, followed by Cavish Gandhi.
Suzanne, there you go.
Thank you.
Hear me? Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I appreciate hugely, uh, your doing this. I have a couple of thoughts. One, I want to support Counselor Mallon's, uh, concern about the ending of leases for various reasons, uh, higher-priced apartments, condo conversions, et cetera. And in many respects, I think that's really critical. And I'm wondering if there aren't other ways that we could do this, such as requiring, um, the owners of new properties that are planning to do this to notify the city with the names of these individuals and/or create some kind of, um, document that would go with, um, whatever is being signed by new leases, for residential, and, and it could be also for residential or small business kinds of contracts about this. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a really important issue and I hope that you will consider that. I also debate about whether the, the first priority should be on people working in the city versus those now living here and recognizing that this is, people working in the city versus those now living here and recognizing that this is largely about low income, but you know, what I'm hearing an awful lot of is the needs of people within the city who are simply really frightened that they won't be able to continue to live here. And, and there we have more control, both specifically addresses where people are currently living as opposed to, we're not quite sure what all of the, the various positions our jobs are. So as I say, I debate that, but thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you. We're going now to Kavish Gandhi.
It appears Kavish has not joined. Heather Hoffman, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Hello, Heather Hoffman, two thirteen Harley Street. I would, I have a comment about not exactly the preferences for inclusionary housing, but more a matter of eligibility. And so it may be a thing for future discussion, but I want to raise it because it affects potentially a lot of people. I personally know two people who have faced this and that is people in inclusionary units who have family members or longtime friends who are homeless and they want to give, give these people a place to sleep. And both of the people that I know have been threatened with eviction for doing this. And what I don't know is whether this is a matter of the law or a matter of policy. If it's only a matter of policy, I think it is a thing that we should really examine because it really affects how we efficiently and effectively we can use the housing that we already have to house people who obviously need it. The, and with respect to housing choice, I apologize that I got a, a business phone call that I had to listen to. And so I didn't hear a lot of what the solicitors said. But I want to raise an issue that I had raised in an MAPC seminar on housing choice. And what I got was absolute silence and not even a guess when I asked this question. And that is whether the housing choice law forgot to require that you increase density. So the question I asked was whether it would allow a simple majority to downzone as long as your downzoning allows for multifamily development. I, I hope that that is something that is taken up because I can see that as a, a way of getting around what I believe the intention is, whether or not I agree with it. And I also hope that, that we will think about other ways to make sure that we don't pay for the sins of all of our neighbors. Thank you.
I believe that's it for public comment. On a motion from Vice Mayor Mallon to close public comment, I'm clerk. Could you take the role?
I'm closing public comment. Councillor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Simmons?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McGovern?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zandervan?
Yeah.
Yes, and public comment is closed on the affirmative vote with five in favor.
Great, thank you. And we're going to go now to questions from committee members and the non-committee members. And I do apologize in advance. I had hoped for a bit more of a presentation about how the housing choices law applies to, to Cambridge. And I thought that was clear in the call of the meeting and in communications with staff. But hopefully we can, we can tease some of that out with questions. So I believe the first hand I saw was Vice Mayor Mallon, followed by councillor Zandervan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe it was me at the last ordinance committee or the city council meeting with the Cabot Cabot and Forbes zoning petition in front of us to really try to figure out how to hold this meeting and understand what the next steps are with the housing choice law and how it would affect any future zoning changes. So thank you for holding this meeting. It does seem like we probably should hold another meeting in a few weeks with staff as they hopefully can put together some kind of presentation on what the next steps are. Because this is a really important and urgent issue. It sounds like we need to develop and draft our own zoning to conform with this law, is the way I understand it from the city solicitor. So I guess I have a couple of questions, but I do hope that we can have a further future meeting where we can have a, a deeper discussion about what's next and how we need to move forward. So until we craft that ordinance or that, that zoning amendment, I should say, if there is a zoning petition in front of us, is it just a simple majority? Until we determine how it will affect our own zoning laws, I guess, I think we were all kind of surprised the evening of the vote of the Cabot Cabot and Forbes zoning amendment, that it was just going to be a simple majority. And I know that we have some big zoning amendments in front of us that will likely come before us before we are able to craft that zoning amendment. So I'm curious about how we will handle those. Will it be on a case-by-case basis until we craft something? So I'm curious if the solicitor has any answer for us on that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I think that unless we have developed amendments that would spell out every situation, it would be determined on a case-by-case basis. There have often been issues over the years where it's not clear whether a supermajority is required or not. And we have worked with other city staff and the clerk to determine that in advance of the vote. So that's not unusual to need that extra layer of scrutiny in any particular case. So certainly here where we don't have any amendment prepared, that would be the way we would go about it for now.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the city solicitor, I know we have one big zoning change that we are, that is in front of us. The missing middle housing petition, which is a housing petition, it's a citywide amendment. It will be at the ordinance committee, I believe, next Thursday. And so we are not in the case of receiving the, the guidance from the law department, sort of the day of, I would urge that we, the law department put together a memo on whether or not that needs a simple majority or if that needs a supermajority, just so everyone's clear over the next several weeks as this moves forward. So I guess we can request that out of this meeting or we can request that in a different way, but I think we should have that information on Thursday as we are reviewing the zoning amendment. My next question, if we are crafting a zoning amendment around housing choice, how many votes would it take to pass such amendment? Would it be a simple majority or a supermajority?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it depends on what the amendment is for. So for certain of the changes addressed in the housing choice law, it would be a simple majority and for others, it would be a supermajority. So we'd have to look at each proposed amendment to see what the vote would be. And there could be different votes required on different aspects in one petition, for example. So each item would have to be looked at separately to determine what the vote would be in that instance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I have to say, I find it a little odd that there would be a statewide change to ensure a simple majority for zoning that would require a supermajority to amend their own municipal ordinances to allow that to happen. I guess I'm really struggling with that mechanics of it because the entire idea of housing choice was to really eliminate the need for a supermajority in passing zoning amendments. So as I said, I think we definitely need a, a further conversation on this with more clarity and maybe its own committee hearing sometime in the very near future so that we can hash out some of these details and perhaps there could be somebody from the state level that could be here, that could help us with some of this guidance as we move through this because I, I think we are going to need a lot of information and there are going to be a lot of technical questions that are going to be asked at that meeting. So I'm just, I'm asking the housing committee co-chairs to think about another future meeting pretty quickly. So I'll yield at this time. Those were sort of my mechanical questions, but thank you, Mr. Chair. We go back.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I might, I did not mean to suggest that if we were making amendments to pieces of our ordinance that would only require a simple majority, that there might be a supermajority required to make those amendments. I agree with what councillor Mallon, Vice Mayor Mallon just said, that if we're making an amendment that involves something that would require only a simple majority, then that would almost undoubtedly require only a simple majority to amend that portion of the ordinance. There may be other portions of the ordinance that are not things that would require a simple majority, in which case those things might require a supermajority. And we'd be happy to provide further guidance. You know, on, on these issues.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go now to councillor Zandervan and then Mayor Sadiq.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, my thanks also to the staff on the earlier presentation. I didn't speak on that, but I do appreciate the information and, and hope that we're able to move forward with that post haste. And I do find this discussion on the housing choices very confusing. I think as councillor, really the main question that I have is, you know, do we need a supermajority or not for any particular vote? And it, it is frustrating that, that it's, that that turns out to be such a difficult question to answer. And, and I've read the law myself multiple times. I'm not a lawyer and, and so, you know, that puts me at a disadvantage. But I found it very confusing and very unclear in terms of trying to figure out when, what we need a supermajority and, and when we're not. So I think we would all really appreciate some, some clear and crisp guidance on that. Particularly perhaps related to recent examples that, that we have to vote on so that we can develop in our minds a, a model that says, okay, for this type of zoning, you need a supermajority, for this type of zoning, we don't. Just so that there's less confusing, confusion because these zoning amendments are confusing as is, even before this changed to the state law. And, and now this has introduced an, an additional layer of complexity and confusion to the process. So I, I echo the calls from my colleagues to, to hold another hearing on this. And, and as much as possible, I hope that we can be provided with some clear guidance that says in this case, you need a simple majority, in this case, you need a supermajority. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll go now to Mayor Sadiq.
Thank you. Through you, many of the comments my colleagues mentioned around the preferences have been covered. I think one thing that comes up for me, and I think this has been an outstanding, outstanding question in my mind, is around when buildings are sold or there are rent increases. That process and how we help residents is really murky. Usually those tenants will reach out to us and there's a, you know, housing and say there's a rent increase, they can't afford it, they have to move or the building's getting sold and then we can get in touch with CDD and, or, or the housing liaison's office. It's a very, I think we've made strides in how we, you know, inform people about what they can do and what help they'll provide, but it's really not, um, I feel like it's not codified. And I think there has to be some work on that. And I think I have some outstanding legal questions around what we could require building owners, how, how they could, the tenants notify us, the building owners don't. And so there's always been that issue and it, it's, it's kind of outside of this in a way, but it's something that keeps coming up. So I, I want us to look into it. And so that's just something I wanted to mention because that ha- has happened more often than not, and how we're tracking that is also unclear. You know, they're, they're kind of constructive displacements. I don't know if that's the right term, but it, it happens. Certainly, I think we could all, as a council, talk about how many times it's happened. And I'm sure the housing liaison office who has to assist many of the residents probably is tracking that as well. So I think that's a follow-up conversation that we should have. That's all for now. Thank you.
Go go to councillor Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to say that I certainly hear what my colleagues are saying and agree that we should have another meeting as soon as possible. And Mr. Chair, only thing I wanted to put out because the meeting schedule is so cramped, hoping that people don't have any objection if the meeting was at nine AM as opposed to, you know, I, depending, of course, it has to do a little bit with staff availability and how soon they can get the information to us, but it may be with, again, because there's so much competing committee work going on that we might have to have a meeting at an odd, an odd time, time that we don't usually have and something that certainly the chair and I will work on. I just wanted to put that out there. I, I know people's schedules are getting more and more tight, but this is an important issue. So I want to acknowledge the, what my colleagues have said and the desire to get feedback in some clear direction as soon as possible. And so I will be certainly working with my co-chair to see how soon that we can get something on the books and just want to just put it out there that it may be just because of the, the crowded schedule we have, it might be an early morning or maybe late, late afternoon meeting. So I just want to put that on the, on out there to my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. And I had a few questions on this. That's all for other councillors. The first was on the, the piece about the council having to make a zoning amendment to operationalize housing choices, which is something I hadn't heard of before. And I did just want to follow up on that because it was my understanding that state law overrides municipal law. And for instance, when the state passed Chapter forty P banning rent control, we didn't have to pass our own ordinance banning rent control. So I'm just trying to understand, could we just get an analysis of, of the state law and what it says or, or, you know, is, would the zoning amendment just be to, to clarify that? Because I don't think we can, we can override the state law. So I don't, I don't quite understand the need for an additional zoning amendment.
Uh, Mr. Chair, what I had said was that the, this, the guidance from the state is that state law would apply so that if the housing choice law provides for things as of right, we do not need to amend our ordinance for the law to apply in that way. That is in fact the case and that's what I had said. But I also added that it might be helpful for us to amend our ordinance to be consistent with the state law so as to avoid ambiguity or confusion for people.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And we can talk about that more as a council. And one of the other questions I had was, you know, appreciate the, the analysis hasn't quite been done for the, the whole housing choices law. We have already done the analysis for the CCF petition or that, that was my understanding. So just trying to figure out if we could talk a little bit more about that analysis and, and why it applied to, to help us understand at least today, sort of how the the housing choices law works. The CCF petition, for instance, wasn't primarily housing. I don't think it was a majority housing. But the housing choices law still applied in that case. So I was just trying to understand that a little better. Did it apply because there was, was some housing in that proposal and it applies to petitions in, in which there is housing in a place there? There isn't housing or, or can you just explain that a little more?
Mr. Chair, I don't know. Mr. Chair, I don't know if CDD has any information on that. I don't, off the top of my head, recall that analysis. I would have to look back at it.
I believe it was the law department that had done that analysis. Is that that not something you could speak to?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay, thank you. And just move on to the next question. One of the public commenters mentioned a point that I had also wanted to clarify is that it's my understanding that housing choices applies to zoning changes only if they would result in in more housing and not less housing. And so we would still need a supermajority for any zoning change that was was downzoning, something. Is that the law department's understanding as well?
I do not have, we have not analyzed that question. So no, I don't have an answer at this time.
Okay, thank you. The other piece was, I think the vice mayor you mentioned, was was having an answer on the missing middle petition. I was hopeful that was something that could come out of this meeting. But if that's not, I'm happy to accept a motion at the end of the meeting for that piece. You know, I think the broader goal is to to understand how this law applies, so we don't have to to figure it off, figure it out on a on a one-off basis. And then on the other piece about holding an additional committee meeting, I'm I'm happy to, and I'm sure councillor Simmons would be happy to chair that as well. And I think that the idea I had was, given the the tight schedule, if we could get a city manager item as a communication with that analysis as soon as possible, then then we can all review it and send it to a committee meeting for further discussion if we feel that's warranted. So that would be my suggestion on how to handle that. We could do that as a as a separate motion today. But with, you know, I'm open to colleagues' suggestions on that as well. So if there are further questions or discussions, I'm happy to to accept motions on both of of those things. I can leave that out a little more.
Mr. Chair?
Councillor Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not certain, so I'd have to ask to our deputy clerk, if you accept a motion to ask for information to be sent to us by way of a I'm sorry, what you said, was it a communication or?
A communication or a city manager agenda item. Yeah, I think it could be either.
If that was embedded in a report, we would, the report would not be acted on until the minutes were adopted. That's correct. That is correct. Get it with any speed. Unfortunately, not. There is a backlog. At this point, I think I have eight committee reports before this actual meeting. So thank you, madam. If if it's a time-sensitive manner, I would suggest that a city council place some sort of policy order on before the 3:00 o'clock deadline today, if you wanted it to go before the council for the meeting of June 7. Thank you, madam deputy. So to you, Mr. Chair, to you, Mr. Chair, I would recommend, of course, you're chairing, it's your call. You may want to not accept up, you may may make mention for the minute that this was done, just so it's, you have it as part of the historical record. But what I would recommend is that either you, Mr. Chair, you with vice mayor, the three of us, as long as we don't exceed, you know, what is acceptable, place that through, and I will leave that to you, Mr. Chair, to put together a policy order that the vice mayor and I could sign on to requesting that, so that it would be before us on Monday, and then we could act on it. That would be my recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. That makes a lot of sense, and thank you for for clarifying that, co-chair Simmons. Because of that, it it likely makes sense to not do a motion today, and I can put those policy orders together after the meeting adjourns and and send those around, and we can submit those before the 3:00 PM deadline today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other questions from councillors or comments? Thank you all for being here at this meeting. I'm glad to see that the inclusionary preferences enacted and hope we can get some more information on the housing choices piece. On the motion from co-chair Simmons to adjourn. Madam clerk, could you take the role?
Councillor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Simmons?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McGovern?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zandervan? Councillor Zandervan?
Yes.
Yes, and the meeting is adjourned at 11:24 on the affirmative vote with five in favor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.